Okay, okay, no, it's not that I don't have to just say yes or no, right?
Yes.
Faith, can we join the meeting now or no?
Okay, we are live.
Yes, you can go ahead.
Okay, if everybody could join the meeting under featured Monday evening and join the meeting on your board docs app if you have it. If not, Mrs. Farber will record your votes. We will call to order pledge allegiance. Dr. Kesmarsek has the flag. Aye, pledge allegiance.
Flag of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are moving for a suspension of board policy. Motion to suspend local board policy zero zero six point one specifically provision six, which requires that at least five members must be physically present before approval shall be granted to board member or members will be absent from the meeting and who desires to participate in a public meeting by way of a two-way communication system. Such suspensions shall be effective until the next meeting of the board.
Motion.
I think I had a motion, Mr. Caviston, a second, Dr. Kesmarsek. Questions on the board? Roll call.
Mr. Caviston.
Yes.
Mrs. Champagne Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Dovin.
Yes.
Mr. Jordan.
Yes.
Mrs. Lepri Van Dusen.
Yes.
Mr. Osborne.
Yeah, yes.
Mrs. Torona Sartone.
Yes.
Dr. Kesmarsek, yes, Dr. Smedley.
Yes, motion carries. At this time, we will do our roll call for the meeting. Dr. Kesmarsek.
Mr. Caviston.
Present.
Mrs. Champagne Collins.
Present.
Mr. Dovin.
Here.
Mr. Jordan.
Here.
Mrs. Lepri Van Dusen.
Here.
Mr. Osborne.
Present.
Mrs. Torona Sartone.
Here.
Dr. Kesmarsek, present. Dr. Smedley.
Present. An executive session was held prior to tonight's meeting regarding personnel. I believe there are no questions regarding printed agenda items for this evening. That is correct?
Correct.
Correct.
At this time, we will have our district holiday card recognition. So, Mr. McDonough, if you would let the individuals in. I will introduce Mrs. Champagne Collins, who will be reading about the holiday cards once everybody is.
Yeah, they should both be in.
Hi. Hi, girls. Hi, girls.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, so this year, we started a new tradition of a holiday card art inverse contest. The competition was open to our elementary students. Seventy-four students participated by submitting art, a verse, or both. Tonight, the board would like to recognize the two students selected to be featured on the 2020 Carbonell Area School Holiday Card. Each student will receive copies of the finished card, a framed copy of their submission, and a $50 gift certificate sponsored by the Carbonell Area Elementary School PTA. The holiday card will be sent to various members of our school community. First, we would like to recognize Juliana Baldimi. Juliana is a third grader. Her drawing of a snowman with a mask immediately caught her attention because it acknowledged the challenges from this year. Please accept these gifts as a token of our appreciation, and we wish you the best in your artistic endeavors. Congrats.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Awesome. Awesome. Good job. That was wonderful. Good for you. Tonight, we would also like to recognize Gabrielle Keller. Gabrielle is a third grader. Her verse reminds us of the importance of kindness during this time. Even though COVID-19 does not allow us to have in-person meetings, it doesn't mean we can't wish each other seasons greetings and Merry Christmas. We wish you both the best of luck in your future endeavors. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Wonderful, wonderful.
Thank you, girls.
Awesome job. Awesome job.
Thank you.
Say Merry Christmas.
You're welcome.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Happy New Year.
Christmas.
There's the card.
Oh, there they are. Beautiful.
How cute.
I love it.
Thank you.
Perfect. Great job.
Good job.
Christmas.
Looks like the tree out of my son's yard, Jimmy.
That was terrific.
Wonderful job, girls.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys want us to sign on here? Okay, they are out. I'm sorry, Dr. Smalley, what's next?
At this point, we will have the employees of the quarter, Mr. McDonough, and I will introduce Dr. Paul Kesmarsek, our board secretary, who, once they arrive, will be presenting these awards.
Okay, they're coming in right now. Let's see, Gabe and, and let's see where Nicole is. There she comes. Okay, Dr. Smalley, they are all in the meeting.
Wonderful. Welcome, everyone. And Dr. Kesmarsek, you have the floor.
Thank you. It's my pleasure to inform you that we are recognizing our employees formally each quarter. A professional staff member as well as a support staff member will be recognized for his or her exemplary performance. Our first recognition this evening will be for professional staff. When people think of the word Keystone, certain images come to mind, such as Pennsylvania, our state flag, Lackawanna County, and even testing. Keystone also has another forgotten definition, according to Webster's Dictionary. The definition of Keystone is a structure that locks others in place or something on which other things depend. There has been one Keystone during which all of the students and staff at the elementary school have depended on over the summer and during the first quarter of the current school year. And that is the team of Mrs. Ann Vidella and Mrs. Gabrielle Pigeon. Through their roles as school counselors, they have provided support and structure to the elementary school. They put their many years of wisdom and knowledge of best counseling practices to develop a positive team approach for the building and to ensure their team is on the same page and are communicating effectively with their students, their parents, and staff. Mrs. Vidella and Mrs. Pigeon have been at the grassroots in working with Mrs. Sayer on organizational and operational tasks at the elementary building. They have been key in assisting with executive decisions by providing history and sound advice. Mrs. Vidella and Mrs. Pigeon listen to people in their time of need and assist with outside counseling services agencies. They place the needs of others above their own during these hard times. These illustrations of Mrs. Vidella's and Mrs. Pigeon's servant leadership in Carbondale's areas need time further exemplify their ability to be a Keystone. I'd like to extend on behalf of the board, congratulations to Mrs. Ann Vidella and Mrs. Gabe Pigeon. The district has a certificate and gift for you that you may pick up at your leisure. Ladies, if you would like to say anything, please feel free to comment.
Thank you, Dr. Kesmarsek. I didn't think you'd have me choked up there, but you did. It's been a while. Thank you so much for your recognition, and we also need to give credit where it's due. We're part of a very hardworking team. And we really do appreciate everyone's dedication. It's not just the two of us, so thank you.
Thank you.
And I totally agree with Gabe. Being part of this team has, has really made it that much easier. It's been a really unusual and challenging year for everybody with all of the issues we've encountered with COVID and virtual learning. I'm sure I speak for Gabe when I say that we really are glad that we've been able to help as much as we have been. So, thank you very much for the recognition.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Our second recognition tonight is for support personnel. Nicole Calibro has established herself as a confident, capable, and dedicated longtime employee of the Carbondale Area School District. Her ability to work under pressure has been invaluable to the operation of the Special Education Department. Her knowledge of the students and their files proved vital to the recent Pennsylvania Department of Education audit. Her abilities have been instrumental in keeping the department together with the part of the, with the, with and working under the Director of Special Education and the Assistant Director. Nicole's unwavering dedication to the students of the district should not go unnoticed. Her calmness in a very unprecedented time was invaluable to her colleagues. Nicole will go above and beyond for the betterment of the Carbondale Area School District, not just the Special Education Department. In addition, Nicole's outstanding work ethic and dedication to the overall success of the district should be recognized. The Special Education Department has grown, and Nicole has adapted to the growth and many challenges that the department has faced. Her passion for the needs of the students is a step above the best. Congratulations to Mrs. Calibro. The district has a certificate and gift for you that you may pick up at your leisure. Mrs. Calibro, if you would like to say anything, please feel free to comment.
I just want to thank everybody, and like Mrs. Pigeon and Mrs. Vidella said, it's teamwork. We all work together to do a weekend.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Nicole.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Congratulations.
If you'll allow me, I also would like to extend our gratitude to all of our staff members who are working up and beyond the call of duty during these unprecedented times. Members of the board, I know I'm speaking on your behalf when I extend to them throughout the district our gratitude for their unwavering support and charger spirit that is exemplified each and every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kesmarsek. And I think Mrs. Sayer will take care of the next introduction, but we will be having a presentation from Public Financial Management. Mr. McDonough, if you'd be so kind to let Mr. Tyson in. Mrs. Sayer, the floor is yours.
Ian is coming in right now. There he is.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
Good evening.
Think you're muted, Holly.
All right. So, we have with us tonight, Mr. Ian Tyson, who is a senior managing consultant with Public Financial Management, who is going to be giving us some information tonight on our budget and future projections. Mr. Tyson.
Thank you, Holly. I will share my screen here. Good evening, everyone. My name is Ian Tyson. I'm going to move this off the, out of the way. Sorry about that. My name is Ian Tyson. I'm with Public Financial Management, and I am part of the technical assistance team that works with the Department of Education on behalf of many financially distressed school districts across the Commonwealth. I'm not a stranger to Carbondale. I've worked with Dave Sayer and Holly Sayer over the past couple of months on preparing some multi-year financial projections based on the district's current year budget and also an analysis of your finances from the past couple of years. I'm also, I've also worked with the Scranton School District on preparing the financial recovery plan and supporting Dr. Candace Fine in implementing the recovery plan. So, the purpose of tonight's presentation is to outline the baseline budget projections, and in this case, that means a status quo scenario where if you take your current year budget and hold those assumptions constant over the next couple of years, what do your finances look like over time? And then, an alternative scenario with a couple of initiatives that would provide balance to the budget over the long term. So, in many cases, for a Pennsylvania school district, just because of the dynamics of real estate taxes, state aid, and growth and other costs like salaries, healthcare, charter school tuition. If you take a baseline scenario with no changes to your budget, it would be no raises in taxes and just let those other parts of your budget continue onward, that's going to identify a gap over time. And then, the purpose of this analysis is to help you identify some areas that can control those costs on the expense side or raise revenues on the revenue side. So, we'll start off with just a brief overview of your adopted budget for the current year, which is about $26 million in total. On the local side, this includes your real estate taxes and a handful of other taxes. That contributes about 32% of your resources. Whereas on the state side, through basic education funding, special education funding, reimbursements for retirement, for Peers and Social Security, that's about 59% of your total budget, so about one-third local, two-thirds state. And then, the remaining amount coming from federal sources, and I just want to draw attention to that, that number, the 10% for this year. That includes the first round of federal relief, the CARES Act funds. Yeah, because, because the recent legislation was passed, this, this presentation does not incorporate that into that, into this, into this portion of the analysis, but that would show up here under your federal sources. On the expenditure side, personnel costs, so that would be your salaries and benefits of the teachers, support staff, administrators, that makes up about two-thirds of your budget. But the remainder coming from things like charter school tuition, payments for students, and other placements for special education services, purchase services. That can run the gamut from transportation and contracts for service for like educational consulting, and then book supplies and debt service. I'll just move quickly through this. This is another way of looking at your budget. First slide is what are we spending the money on? Second slide is where are you spending it, whether that's regular education, special education, support, or other areas. This slide shows a summary of your past couple of years of annual results. We'll use this similar format for a lot of the other charts and tables coming up. But in the chart in the center, the yellow bars, that were, that represent your annual result. A bar below the line, that's a deficit, with the written numbers in red. Bar above refers to a surplus, and the blue refers to your running fund balance. That's the, the resources that you have in reserve. So, it's the cumulative history of all your financial results, you know, all the years of surpluses or all the years of deficits. That adds up to your running fund balance. And here down in the table, I've got a breakout of the revenues and the expenditures with, with the details for both the result, fund balance there. Another way of looking at it is what's driving those changes over time? So, here in this chart in the green on the left-hand side, we've have changes in annual revenues, and on the right-hand side, we have changes in annual expenditures. So, this is the average over that period from 2014, 15 to 2018, 19. And here, you can see revenues grow a little bit faster than expenditures by about a little bit over a percentage point or so. And most of that's coming from a couple of areas on the local side. On the real estate tax side, this growth here is driven by raises in the real estate tax rate over time. You and prior board members raised rate, raised real estate tax rates over time to offset these growing expenditures on the right-hand side. Earned income taxes, the board, the board has that rate set in Act 511. You can't change that rate. So, this great, this growth here would represent changes in, you know, personal income and employment in the region. State aid, that's driven by basic education funding and other sources of state aid that we saw on the other pie chart. And then, on the expense side, here, going back to the, the larger slices that, that referred to the personnel cost. A lot of the growth there is from benefits for healthcare, Peers, and other pieces of your retirement. Next biggest growth there would be from charter school tuition, both from growing enrollment and then also increases in the tuition rate and then salaries. And over here, there's some offsets there. On the debt service side, the district did an unfunded debt borrowing and debt restructuring in the 2019 calendar year. So, that offset your current year debt service costs for one year, and then in future years, that would go up as you pay that off over time. And then, on the changes in the programmatic side, some of the, some of the expenses for special education tuition were, were offset by, by changes in the structure of that program. So, rather than sending their students to placements and other programs, you would use some of your own staff to provide those services to students. And here's just a quick summary of some of those other changes, but in a narrative form. So, we talked about the real estate taxes. We talked about the growth in state aid. There were some changes in, in some things on the operating side that don't show up in that slide previously, where the district had reduced some of its other purchase services categories. And then, there are some other things that are putting pressure on your budget. So, you know, as you see the revenues grow or as you see the expenses, either, either stay in line with that or decrease in some of those cases. There are the things that make it harder or bigger challenge to manage that budget. So, the first one is a reduction in federal revenues over time, so decrease in Title I funds, you know, that's either going to come from two ear, two areas. Either, you know, the general fund picks up that difference in the costs, or, you know, a reduction in programs over time. Outside of that window of time, starting in 2019, 20, that's when the districts did a couple of, did a couple of furloughs to balance its last year's budget. We saw the growth in the health insurance costs. We saw the growth in charter school tuition costs. And like I said, that debt service restructuring, that provides you a short-term relief, but again, that's only a one-year savings, and you've got to make up that difference over time by paying that back. So, here, we're going to take a look at some of the changes that we made to the, to the adopted 2021 budget. So, the, the next couple of slides, we're going to look at some differences from what was adopted back in June. And a lot of this is just to put on some very conservative assumptions for the current year, because when we started this back in the late summer, early fall, there's a lot of uncertainty around, you know, local taxes where they would end up. And then, some, as the, as the year-to-date results came in for some of your expenditures, I, I increased some of those because these are some lines that can see some very high variation from year to year. So, on the local side, I reduced some, your earned income taxes and real estate transfer taxes to be a bit more conservative. On the expenditure side, I upped your, your group insurance or your healthcare and other benefit costs. Your special education tuition and your charter school tuition to reflect some more conservative assumptions that would be well within the range of what you saw from not only the 1920 school year, but a couple of years prior. Because those costs are very variable, they can be up and down in any given year by, you know, almost two, two double digits. On the local tax side, we're assuming some, some gradual growth in, in the collection rate and some other local taxes as the economy rebounds from the recovery from the coronavirus. On the state aid, we're assuming some growth in major state sources from basic education funding and special education funding, and the CARES Act funds are removed after the first year. On the salary side, growth of 2.4%, so this is assuming some regular growth in salaries based on the district's teacher's contract that was in place prior to its expiration. So, this again is just to assume what happens when, when the steady-state scenario continues, regular, regular salary increases, healthcare costs continue to grow. Charter school tuition rate continues to go up, although enrollment is flat. Transportation costs continue to grow, and the district repays its debt down over time. You add all those things together, and this is the five-year projection starting from the current year budget. So, again, I'll pause here for a minute and hover on a couple of points that I'll make here. So, this is different from your adopted budget. So, those changes that we made on the expenditure side and the revenue side, rather than this being zero with the balanced budget, this is a slight negative deficit. So, you're, you're drawing down some of that fund balance to make it through the end of this year if those assumptions hold true. Starting in the next year, that deficit grows. It almost doubled. It doubles to 1.6 million. And then, that, that, that grows over time by about $300,000 per year. And the, and the fund balance is exhausted, which means that it's depleted, starting at the end of the 2021, 22 school year. Now, what does this tell us? So, this means that there's a couple of things that are going on there. So, if we go back to that chart where I showed the, the bars growing in green next to the bars that were growing in red, what's happening here is that the bars in red are growing faster. So, this is being driven by expenditure growth that's growing faster than the revenues, and that's growing by about $300,000 of a year, per year, starting after the first year that we've got. Now, based on our work in, in other school districts around the Commonwealth, there's a couple of initiatives that are, that are, that are going to have the largest likelihood of bringing a structural balance to that budget. So, right here at the top, this is assuming that annual tax increases begin starting in 21, 22. So, with the, the current year budget, the budget was adopted without a tax increase. This is assuming that that prior trend continues. So, we saw the, those real estate taxes growing on, almost in line with total revenues. This is assuming that annual tax increases are there to offset that growth in costs. On the, on the expenditure side, for the 2021 budget and the 2021, 22 school year, we're assuming no salary increases, so a salary freeze for two years. And then, a, a cap in the growth in costs of 1% per year after that. So, that's different from the baseline where it was assuming the regular 2.4% growth in your total salary budget over time. On the charter school side, this is assuming that you return some of those students over the next couple of years. So, you know, competing for some of those kids that may have enrolled in cyber charter schools or maybe enrolled in Feld Charter School. This is assuming that some of those schools, some of those students start to return back to the district's schools, the elementary and the, and the secondary school. And you can see some savings there as their students come back. And then, again, on the benefit side, we're assuming a reduction in the, in the baseline assumption for the healthcare costs. And over here in the table, I've got a summary of what that means for each year. So, in the left-hand column, we have what does that mean for the first school year, 21, 22. Out here in year five, this is all the way at the end of the projections in 2025, 26. And then, this is the sum of that for each of those years, and these are just rounded for, for, for ease of presentation. And the, and the projections in the background will have those, those exact calculations for ours. So, here's what happens when you add all those initiatives into that baseline. So, again, since I'm not changing anything to the current year, that still looks the same as the prior year. But here, you can see, rather than the yellow bar, the annual deficit growing, the, the opposite happens. So, it sort of levels out between the current year and the next year, and then slowly it, it starts to level out and then reduce. it it starts to level out and then reduce over time, especially as the the charter school tuition starts to to roll through the the tuition calculations and some of those cumulative changes like the like the salary assumption and the healthcare assumption start to work their way through the budget. So we go from a slight deficit in the first year to a positive result in the out years. And slowly diminishing annual deficits in the mean in the meantime. So what does that tell us? So this tells us that that two things. One is that absent any changes going into the budget planning season for next year. If the district's costs continue to grow as they have in the past, healthcare growing at a rate above inflation, charter school tuition continuing to grow, salaries continuing to grow. There's going to be some tough budget decisions that need to be made for next year. And again, in that scenario that I showed previously, this is assuming annual tax increases. So that means that, you know, with with growth in taxes, with those expenditure cost controls, the district is going to have to take a hard look at some of its at his budgets for the next couple of years and take a look at, you know, what are some other things that might be out there that they could do? So that might be, you know, reviewing things like increasing Medicaid access billing to support federal federal revenues for special education programs, continuing to look at transportation efficiencies like you did in the past couple of years. Taking a look at your special education services to see if there's any continued efficiencies that you could do, whereas we saw in that one chart where the tuition costs went down over time to 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 sort of offset that growth that was seen on the salary side. And then I think most importantly, you're going to have to look at, you know, what can be affordable for things in your in your in your bargaining, because behind the tax increases, that was the the second and then the 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 last option that was contributing the most, the difference between the baseline and the alternate scenario that we have here. With that, Holly, I think I'll break here and open up the the floor to any questions from the board.
Does the board have any questions? All right, not hearing any then. Ian, we appreciate your presentation this evening and not only working with us, but also sharing with us your findings and your projections for our budget and the initiatives that your company is suggesting that can help close the the gap with our budget deficit. Thank you for coming tonight. And and also providing not just the board, but the public with this information.
Yeah, thank you so much. And I will make sure that you have a copy of this that you could post it to your website as well.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
Ian, thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you. Thank you, Ian.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, moving on, meeting minutes. Motion to approve the regular monthly meeting minutes of November sixteenth twenty twenty.
Motion.
So moved.
Motion, Mrs. Champagne Collins, second Dr. Kasmarsik. Questions on the board? Roll call.
Mr. Caviston.
Yes.
Mrs. Champagne Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Dovin.
Yes.
Mr. Jordan.
Yes.
Mrs. Lepre Yvandusen.
Yes.
Mr. Osborne.
Yes.
Mrs. Toronas Arton.
Oh, she's on mute.
We'll record record her as I guess absent until she regains communication, but we'll keep moving.
Dr. Kasmarsik, yes, Dr. Smedley.
Yes, motion carries. Motion to approve the reorganizational meeting minutes of December first twenty twenty.
Motion.
Second.
I think that was, okay, Mrs. Champagne Collins, second Mr. Mr. Caviston. Board, roll call.
Mr. Caviston.
Yes.
Mrs. Champagne Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Dovin.
Yes.
Mr. Jordan.
Yes.
Mrs. Lepre Yvandusen.
Yes.
Mr. Osborne.
Yes.
Mrs. Toronas Arton. Dr. Kasmarsik, yes, Dr. Smedley.
Yes, motion carries. Motion to approve the November treasures report as read by Mr. Osborne.
Beginning balance, November one twenty twenty was eight million eight hundred fifty six thousand three eighty six. Revenues were transfer taxes, ten thousand four seventeen, wage tax, one hundred and sixty one thousand five ninety five. Real estate taxes, three hundred thirteen thousand three eighty nine. Portnoy delinquent taxes, nineteen thousand nine eighty nine. Montgomery IU Foundation, fourteen thousand. State revenue, two hundred and fourteen thousand four seventy two. Federal revenue, one hundred fifty nine thousand three twenty nine. Healthcare and miscellaneous, ten thousand one oh seven, interest, four thousand twenty four. Total receipts, nine hundred and seven thousand three hundred and twenty two dollars. Disbursements for the month of November were one million seven hundred and thirty two, seven hundred and thirty thousand eight eighty two. Leaving us a balance, November thirtieth twenty twenty of seven million seven hundred and sixty two thousand eight twenty six. With the four million debt out still outstanding.
So moved.
Motion, Mr. Jordan.
Second.
Second, Mr. Dovin. Board, roll call.
Mr. Caviston.
Yes.
Mrs. Champagne Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Dovin.
Yes.
Mr. Jordan.
Yes.
Mrs. Lepre Yvandusen.
Yes.
Mr. Osborne.
Yes.
Mrs. Toronas Arton. Dr. Kasmarsik, yes, Dr. Smedley.
Yes, motion carries. Motion to approve payment of the monthly bills.
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Caviston.
Second.
Second, Mr. Osborne. Questions on the board? Roll call.
Mr. Caviston.
Yes.
Mrs. Champagne Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Dovin.
Yes.
Mr. Jordan.
Yes.
Mrs. Lepre Yvandusen.
Yes.
Mr. Osborne.
Yes.
Dr. Kasmarsik, yes, Dr. Smedley.
Yes, motion carries. Motion to appoint blank as solicitor of the district at a rate of blank per month, also to serve as district negotiator at a rate of blank per hour and the continuation of benefits as approved last year.
Dr. Smedley, I'll make a motion to appoint John Lawler Esquire as solicitor of the district at a rate of one thousand one hundred and fifty dollars a month. Also to serve as district negotiator at a rate of eighty five dollars per hour. And the continuation of benefits that is approved last year.
Motion, Dr. Kasmarsik, second, Mr. Jordan. Board, roll call.
Mr. Caviston.
Yes.
Mrs. Champagne Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Dovin.
Yes.
Mr. Jordan.
Yes.
Mrs. Lepre Yvandusen.
Yes.
Mr. Osborne.
Yes.
Dr. Smedley.
Yes.
And I'm sorry, doctor, I I skipped myself. I'm a yes as well. I think we've lost Mrs. Toronas Arton.
Yeah, she's she's not.
Well, somebody just popped in.
Okay. That's her. Mrs. Toronas Arton, are you there?
Oh, they unlocked my iPad. That's what happened.
Thank you.
Hello?
Mrs. Toronas Arton has returned to the meeting.
Thank you. Oh, my gosh.
Welcome back.
Hi.
Hi.
Moving on to recognition, elementary principal, motion to accept from Mr. William Vavarsak, elementary principal, effective June thirtieth twenty twenty one due to retirement.
Motion.
Motion, Mrs. Champagne Collins.
Second.
Second, Mr. Dovin. Questions on the board?
Dr. Smedley, if you'll allow me to, I would like to extend to Mr. Vavarsak. Best wishes in his retirement. I appreciate the fact that he has provided service to the Carbondale Area School District throughout his years as both a teacher at the elementary school and most recently as an administrator within the district. May he have a long and profitable and pleasant retirement. Thank you.
Thank you, doctor, and and thank you, Mr. Vavarsak, for your service to the district.
Thank you, Mr. Vavarsak.
Roll call.
Mr. Caviston.
Yes.
Mrs. Champagne Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Dovin.
Yes.
Mr. Jordan.
Yes.
Mrs. Lepre Yvandusen.
Yes.
Mr. Osborne.
Yes.
Mrs. Toronas Arton.
Yes.
Dr. Kasmarsik, yes, Dr. Smedley.
Yes, motion carries. Motion to appoint blank as a long term substitute special education teacher on step one of the contract between the Carbondale Area School District and the Carbondale Area Education Association effective immediately as per the superintendent's recommendation.
Dr. Smedley, I'll make the motion to appoint Amanda. Excuse me if I mispronounced this, Gruzes, Gruzeski.
Motion by Mr. Osborne.
Second.
Second by Dr. Kasmarsik. Questions from the board? Roll call.
Mr. Caviston.
Yes.
Mrs. Champagne Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Dovin.
Yes.
Mr. Jordan.
Yes.
Mrs. Lepre Yvandusen.
Yes.
Mr. Osborne.
Yes.
Mrs. Toronas Arton.
Yes.
Dr. Kasmarsik, yes, Dr. Smedley.
Yes, motion carries. Motion to appoint Ms. Gabrielle Roach as a special education teacher, emergency permit effective December one twenty twenty on step one of the contract between the Carbondale Area School District and the Carbondale Area Education Association.
So moved.
Motion, Dr. Kasmarsik, I'll make the second. Questions on the board? Roll call.
Mr. Caviston.
Yes.
Mrs. Champagne Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Dovin.
Yes.
Mr. Jordan.
Yes.
Mrs. Lepre Yvandusen.
Yes.
Mr. Osborne.
Yes.
Mrs. Toronas Arton.
Yes.
Dr. Kasmarsik, yes, Dr. Smedley.
Yes, motion carries. So moving on to teacher mentors. Motion to approve the following teacher mentors for the twenty twenty one school year is submitted by Mr. Farrell, high school principal. And Mrs. Bestin, assistant to the special education director. Mr. Morrow to mentor Mr. Robert Barnett. Miss Olivetti to mentor Mrs. Diane Bailey's. Mrs. Talarico to mentor Mrs. Kristen McDonald. Miss Alampi to mentor Mrs. Lauren Zavislak. Mrs. Boldig to mentor Mr. Walter Kulisinski and Mr. Offner to mentor Ms. Gabrielle Roach.
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Caviston.
Second.
Second, Mr. Dovin. Questions from the board? Roll call.
Mr. Caviston.
Yes.
Mrs. Champagne Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Dovin.
Yes.
Mr. Jordan.
Yes.
Mrs. Lepre Yvandusen.
Yes.
Mr. Osborne.
Yes.
Mrs. Toronas Arton.
Yes.
Dr. Kasmarsik, yes, Dr. Smedley.
Yes, motion carries. We we mo- motion to adjust Mrs. Priscilla Bilski's, the part time high school nurse, daily rate from one twenty five to one seventy five per day.
Motion.
Motion, Mrs. Lepre Yvandusen.
Second.
Second, Dr. Kasmarsik. Questions from the board? Roll call.
Mr. Caviston.
Yes.
Mrs. Champagne Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Dovin.
Yes.
Mr. Jordan.
Yes.
Mrs. Lepre Yvandusen.
Yes.
Mr. Osborne.
Yes.
Mrs. Toronas Arton.
Yes.
Dr. Kasmarsik, yes, Dr. Smedley.
Yes, motion carries. Are we proceeding with G or did we say we were going to table that?
Table it.
Table in G this evening. H, we are proceeding with? No opposition. Motion to appoint the following assistant coaches for the twenty twenty one season is submitted by Mr. Gabriel, athletic director. JV Boys Basketball, Sean Mangan, Head Freshman Boys Basketball, Sean Bolinas, Assistant Freshman Boys Basketball, Michael Murphy. Head Junior High Boys Basketball, Billy Rumford, Assistant Junior High Boys Basketball, Bobby Solitsky. Sixth grade Boys Basketball, Keith Quinn, JV Girls Basketball, Ann Totsky. Volunteer Assistant Girls Basketball, Mike Talarico, Head Junior High Girls Basketball, Dennis Fox. Assistant Junior High Girls Basketball, Rebecca Newcomb. Sixth grade Girls Basketball, No Applicant, and Assistant Cheerleading Advisor, Darcy La Savage.
Dr. Smedley, are we still having sports or are they still suspended?
Um, the district has lifted the suspension of the sports. The P I double A, I'm not sure the P I double A, the I guess the Department of Health has the sports suspended. Right now until the beginning of January, if I'm Mrs. Sarah, I think around the fourth. Right now, the sports season is at the at the decision of the Department of Health of the state of Pennsylvania.
Correct.
And we have no students in the school, correct?
Correct. There's no instruction going on.
Anybody else? I would say motion will die to a lack of emotion. And I will move on. Motion to grant permission to Mrs. Gabriel Pigeon to attend the Cooperative Education Training on January twenty first and twenty second two thousand twenty one at Camp Hill PA at a cost of two forty six eighty nine.
So moved.
Motion, Dr. Kasmarsik, I'll make the second. Questions on the board? Roll call.
Dr. Kasm, just a quick question. I have no objection, but if we're still under COVID, are we? Are they having this?
So this is an individual arrangement with these two gentlemen provide this workshop like environment, so we would just adjust it with the time.
Okay.
And the date.
Thank you, Mrs. Sarah. Thank you, Mr. Osborne. Roll call.
Mr. Caviston.
Yes.
Mrs. Champagne Collins. Mr. Dovin.
Yes.
Mr. Jordan. Is Mr. Jordan here?
We will mark him as as absent at this point, moving forward until Mr. Jordan can reestablish connection.
Mrs. Lepre Yvandusen.
Yes.
Mr. Osborne.
Yes.
Mrs. Toronas Arton.
Yes.
Dr. Kasmarsik, yes, Dr. Smedley.
Yes, motion carries. Motion to grant permission to Mrs. Holly Sear, superintendent, to attend the Safe Crisis Management Training on December fourteenth and fifteenth twenty twenty at Camp Hill PA at a cost of three ninety nine. And I think, Mrs. Sarah, that was actually changed to virtual. And I believe you participated in that virtually.
That is correct. There was no travel or anything.
Thank you. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Second, Dr. Kasmarsik. Questions on the board? Roll call.
Mr. Caviston.
Yes.
Mrs. Champagne Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Dovin.
Yes.
I still don't see Mr. Jordan. Mrs. Lepre Yvandusen.
Yes.
Mr. Osborne.
Yes.
Mrs. Toronas Arton.
Yes.
Dr. Kasmarsik, yes, Dr. Smedley.
Yes, motion carries. Motion to approve settlement agreement with student number two eight two one nine in the Carbondale Area School District.
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Dovin.
Second.
Second, Mr. Osborne. Questions on the board? Roll call.
Mr. Caviston.
Yes.
Mrs. Champagne Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Dovin.
Yes. Yes.
Mrs. Lepreycan Dusen.
Yes.
Mr. Osborne.
Yes.
Mrs. Toronas Arton.
Yes.
Dr. Kesmarsik, yes. Dr. Smedley.
Yes, motion carries. Motion to enter into a contracted service agreement with Anton Gilpin for online teacher services at a rate of thirty dollars per hour for up to two hours per school calendar day, not to exceed ten hours per week.
Hello?
That's a motion by Mrs. Toronas Arton. Second by Mr. Dovin? Questions on the board? Roll call.
Mr. Caviston.
Yes.
Mrs. Champagne Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Dovin.
Yes.
Mrs. Lepreycan Dusen.
Yes.
Mr. Osborne.
Yes.
Mrs. Toronas Arton.
Yes.
Dr. Kesmarsik, yes. Dr. Smedley.
Yes, motion carries. Motion to accept or reject an offer of twelve, one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars for Joseph Zukas Estate, rear forty-one Gordon Ave, map number zero-five-four-one-six-zero-one-zero-three, in the Lackawanna repository sale. I'm going to assume that these are recommendations to proceed, Mr. Lawler and Mr. Sarah.
Yes.
Yes.
So I guess I'll make the. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I'm just saying, these will ultimately get these properties back on the tax rules, which is what we want.
Right, right now, you're getting nothing.
So I'll make the motion to accept the first one?
Second.
Second, Mr. Caviston. Board, roll call.
Mr. Caviston.
Yes.
Mrs. Brandy Champagne Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Dovin.
Yes.
Mr. Jordan. Mrs. Lepreycan Dusen.
Yes.
Mr. Osborne.
Yes.
Mrs. Toronas Arton.
Yes.
Dr. Kesmarsik, yes. Dr. Smedley.
Yes, motion carries.
I think, doctor, it should be noted that Mr. Jordan is able to vote. Okay, even though we haven't established communication with him, he is recording his vote.
Do we need a verbal on that, Mr. Lawler?
No, I don't believe you need a voice vote. As long as he can hear it and respond to his name and vote, he can do that.
Okay, and, but we need to hear what his vote is, right?
We'd like to, yes.
And I will, I will, uh, defer to Mrs. Farber to announce his vote.
He, he's rejoined the meeting right now, everyone. He just joined it.
There you are, Mr. Jordan.
Mr. Jordan, you are muted, and in the interim, we are voting on a motion to accept a repository sale. The first one on the agenda. Mr. Jordan.
Yes, you get me?
Yes, Mr. Jordan is a yes. Moving on to number two. Thank you, Dr. Kesmarsik. Motion to accept or reject an offer of twenty-five hundred for, uh, Jihad Hammond for property at twenty-nine Greenfield Road, city of Carbondale, map three zero five four one five zero one zero zero two eight through the Lackawanna County Repository Sale. I will also make a motion to accept this offer. I, there was a bunch of people. I didn't get it.
Take anybody.
Second, Mr. Jordan. Questions on the board? Roll call.
Mr. Caviston.
Yes.
Mrs. Champagne Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Dovin.
Yes.
Mr. Jordan.
Yes.
Mrs. Lepreycan Dusen.
Yes.
Mr. Osborne.
Yes.
Mrs. Toronas Arton.
Yes.
Dr. Kesmarsik, yes. Dr. Smedley.
Yes, motion carries. Okay, this one's not written here. Going on. Okay, I'm clicking on the third one, and I have nothing under, no, the motion isn't there. So, let me, I'm guessing this is a motion. Uh, motion to accept, uh, property offer of one thou- for one thousand, four seventy-six and twenty-five cents. I'm just looking to see, it's Rose, Roseland Rosario who is making the offer. The property address is seventy-two Spring Street, Carbondale City, and the map number zero-five-five zero-five-zero-three zero-zero-zero-three.
Correct.
I guess I'll make that motion to accept if I have included all the necessary language in the motion.
Second.
Second, Mrs. Champagne Collins. Questions from the board? Roll call.
Mr. Caviston.
Yes.
Mrs. Champagne Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Dovin.
Yes.
Mr. Jordan.
Yes.
Mrs. Lepreycan Dusen.
Yes.
Mr. Osborne.
Yes.
Mrs. Toronas Arton.
Yes.
Dr. Kesmarsik, yes. Dr. Smedley.
Yes, motion carries. Motion to make the adjustment to the emergency instructional time resolution and emergency instructional time template due to the COVID-nineteen pandemic.
So moved.
Motion, Dr. Kesmarsik. Second, Mrs. Champagne Collins. Questions on the board? Roll call.
Mr. Caviston.
Yes.
Mrs. Champagne Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Dovin.
Yes.
Mr. Jordan.
Yes.
Mrs. Lepreycan Dusen.
Yes.
Mr. Osborne.
Yes.
Mrs. Toronas Arton.
Yes.
Dr. Kesmarsik, yes. Dr. Smedley.
Yes, motion carries. Motion to purchase two hundred Dell thirty-one hundred Chromebooks, quote number thirty thousand, seven-two-six-four-oh-three-three-eight-point-one, and the amount of sixty thousand, three-twenty-two. If I remember along the way, this is to furnish to seventh and eighth grade because we had money left over in the CARES Act. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Correct.
Okay. So we, once we can get these rolled out, which the first batch has arrived in the district, we have people working, we have staff, dedicated staff members working on getting these, uh, books rolled out, but we are anticipating uh, Chromebooks for all seventh through twelfth graders at Carbondale in the upcoming, uh, hopefully by spring, late winter. I guess I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Mo- second, Dr. Kesmarsik. Board, roll call.
Mr. Caviston.
Yes.
Mrs. Champagne Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Dovin.
Yes.
Mr. Jordan.
Yes.
Mrs. Lepreycan Dusen.
Yes.
Mr. Osborne.
Yes.
Mrs. Toronas Arton.
Yes.
Dr. Kesmarsik, yes. Dr. Smedley.
Yes, motion carries. Motion to adopt a budget resolution to opt out of Act One Acceleration Budget Procedures for the twenty-one twenty-two school year at an index of four point six percent.
Doctor, I will make a motion if someone will answer and put it in English what we're making a motion.
Right. That's fair. We, we do this motion every year. Th- this is a motion that the Pennsylvania Legislature allowed, allows districts to resume their normal budget process boot, doing it in May and June like always, if you agree not to go over the state-established index. So right now, your current mileage is one thirty point six-six-eight. By passing this resolution, it means you can't raise taxes by more than the index, which I believe is five or six percent, which is on the resolution. So basically, it, it limits you as to how much you can raise taxes, and this is what most districts do. Based on, you know, based on their current situations. Very, very, very few districts uh, try to pass budgets in January, especially now with COVID.
Thank you, Mr. Sarah. I'll make the motion.
Motion, Dr. Kesmarsik?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Champagne Collins. Board, roll call.
Mr. Caviston.
Yes.
Mrs. Champagne Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Dovin.
Yes.
Mr. Jordan.
Yes.
Mrs. Lepreycan Dusen.
Yes.
Mr. Osborne.
Yes.
Mrs. Toronas Arton.
Yes.
Dr. Kesmarsik, yes. Dr. Smedley.
Yes, motion carries. Motion to amend the agreement with the Scranton Lackawanna Human Development Agency Incorporated for the pre-K counts program for the twenty twenty-one school year from three hundred, four thousand, four hundred, which was forty slots for a hundred and eighty days to two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, eight twenty-five, which is thirty-four slots for a hundred and eighty days, and head start program from fifty-four dollars or fifty-four thousand, something, 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 David?
Uh, let me get it.
He'll get us that.
What that, what that is, our agreements to, we don't have three pre-K classes anymore. Now we only have two. So those are just agreements reflective of the funding to lower what we're going to get because we're not incurring that third cost to the class.
Okay, fifteen FD slots at twenty dollars per day for a hundred and eighty days to twenty-one thousand, six hundred, which is six FD slots at twenty dollars per day for a hundred and eighty days. So as soon as Mr. Sarah gives us those in the agreement here.
It's fifty-four thousand.
Fifty-four, whoa, whoa, whoa.
Okay, beautiful. I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second, Mr. Jordan? Roll call. Board, roll call.
Mr. Caviston.
Yes.
Mrs. Champagne Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Dovin.
Yes.
Mr. Jordan.
Yes.
Mrs. Lepreycan Dusen.
Yes.
Mr. Osborne.
Yes.
Mrs. Toronas Arton.
Yes.
Dr. Kesmarsik, yes. Dr. Smedley.
Yes, motion carries. Motion to extend the payment period for the twenty twenty-one school taxes for the four coupon taxpayers from December fifth, twenty twenty through blank, due to unforeseen condition caused by the COVID-nineteen result of postal delays.
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Dovin, and a day, Mr. Dovin?
Uh.
The recommended date from the, from the administration was.
What was the recommended?
Five days, tw- fifth to the tenth.
It was a five-day deal?
Yes.
December tenth, twenty twenty.
Motion, Mr. Dovin?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Lepreycan Dusen? Questions on the board? Roll call.
Mr. Caviston.
Yes.
Mr. Champagne Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Dovin.
Yes.
Mr. Jordan.
Yes.
Mrs. Lepreycan Dusen.
Yes.
Mr. Osborne.
Yes.
Mrs. Toronas Arton.
Yes.
Dr. Kesmarsik, yes. Dr. Smedley.
Yes, motion carries. Okay, board, old business. Board, new business. I've got two committees that we're going to form, uh, moving forward. Number one uh, will be the in, district-wide interviewing committee, uh, which will, we will appoint Mr. John Jordan, Dr. Paul Kesmarsik, and Brandy Champagne Collins going forward for any interviews taking place within the district. The second one committee we also established tonight is the Support Staff Negotiation Committee, which will be negotiating the contract for the support staff, which is scheduled to begin, uh, in January. The members of the board who will be appointed to that, Mr. Dave Osborne, Dr. Paul Kesmarsik, and Mr. John Jordan. They are my two appointments, two committees this evening. Any other?